Back and that's for the kind of the hospital area, the former hospital area rezone. We own the the building that houses Centerstone, that's a county facility. So this they're working with Centerstone, they're they're going to redo the parking in the area and all that. This is authorizing them to to have a rezone request submitted to the to the city plant commission that includes that area. The second one is has is areas in Steinsville that want to Steinsville is actually asking to rezone part of their part of their town and the we own a lot in that. I think we own that through tax sales and those kinds of things. We don't have any plans for it. We don't have any, you know, real reason to be concerned about it. So they're asking for our their ability to submit a rezone request for that area. If you guys are comfortable with that, we'll have the president commissioner Thomas sign off on those and get those to the respective persons.
Any comments, questions?
No, do we need a motion?
Do we need to do a formal vote on these?
I think it would be best in case anybody came and asked.
Two separate motions.
I would just have the I would I would say move the approval of or authorize the president to sign off on the City of Bloomington's request for the former hospital side in the area around the Centerstone and that the authorizing also authorizing the president to sign off on the rezone of 11 lots at Stein.
So moved.
We have a motion? We have a motion and we have a second. Any public comment on these items or any questions from commissioners? It's pretty, pretty. I don't see any public comments. All those in favor approving the motion on the two items, one relating to the land near Centerstone, the other relating to Steinsville signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Thank you. Now let's see if we have Mr. Myers. Looks like we do. Yay, thank you so much, T S D. Okay. Good morning.
Can you hear me all right? Good morning. Okay, great. Okay, so this is the Young Trucking Construction Shop rezone from IG to HI. Also known as REZ dash twenty two dash four or ordinance twenty two dash twenty five. So I'm gonna do a quick summary of this petition site and answer any questions you have. I'll have a full formal presentation slides for the formal session. So this petition site is eight point five acres. It's in Richland Township at twelve thirty eight North Loesch Road. Is the request is to amend the zoning map from general industrial or IG to heavy industrial HI. And petitioners intention behind the rezone request is to provide the zoning designation to establish a trucking terminal. The use determination used twenty two dash four identified the proposed business activity as a trucking terminal. The petitioner and petition representative appealed that determination. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals heard that appeal and reaffirmed the planning department's determination that trucking terminal was the best fit for the proposed business activity. If the reason request is approved, petitioner intends to complete the planning process for establishing the trucking terminal through the commercial site plan requirements of chapter eight fifteen. And there's also special condition thirty one as outlined in chapter eight or two for trucking terminal for the proposed commercial use on the site. There's also was a grading permit issued for this site previously before this reason petition came through. And there's been some communication between planning staff and the petitioner about getting that grading permit amended or getting a new one issued. Turns out that the petitioner had placed some of the grading they had done on the site within a drainage easement. And there's been some communication between both planning staff and petitioner to get that rectified potentially through this rezone as well as the subsequent commercial site plan that would be forthcoming. Three rezones denied, petitioner may pursue any of the available permitted uses known in the general industrial zoning district. Again, subject to any commercial site plan requirements or special conditions that would be associated with a specific use. So the plant commission heard this during the August second meeting. And they recommended a positive recommendation for the vote of six to one with the following conditions. The petition recorded written commitment limiting the uses in the heavy industrial zoning district to exclude the following central garbage rubbish removal, remote garbage rubbish removal, wastewater treatment facility, water treatment facility, agricultural sale barn, bottled gas storage distribution. And then number two, petition recorded written commitment to preserve the vegetation on the west side of the property. The petitioner had and petition representative have supplied a draft commitment is included in your packet, basically stating their commitment to limit the uses on the property, excuse me. And you'll note that the following uses are listed here. They also did in the end include rock crushing as being not permitted on this property within this written commitment. They also have a section here regarding vegetation preservation and some details regarding that. Basically stating that they want to remain maintain their rights to selectively remove trees for forest health in accordance with certain forestry management plan. The removal invasive plants, shrubs and tree species, removal of dead or fallen trees and the cutting of underbrush for maintenance pass access. And then also a detail about the width of the preservation area along the entire western property line of the subject property. So we can come back to the written commitment draft if we want to have any questions regarding it. But I'm going to go ahead and just dive into some more details here. Like I said, they're looking for the heavy industrial district, moving from the general industrial district to accommodate trucking terminal. Trucking terminals defined as a terminal facility used by highway type property carrying vehicles, which may include truck maintenance facilities. See here. I'm gonna scroll through a lot of these items here. It is part of a subdivision, the Curry and Loesch minor subdivision is lot number three, as you can see up here. Petition site. There are other commercial uses in the area. I don't know off the top of my head what their specific uses are. But I can get that information for you and have it ready for the formal session. There is no FEMA flood plane on the property. There are no known cars features on the property. And there is a stormwater detention area that was identified in northeast corner for the property during the minor subdivision. So that will likely be maintained. And then here are some pictures of the site. You'll note that these pictures here indicate the grading that occurred before the rezone petition was initiated. And again, a portion of this eastern side of the pad graded pad area was encroaches into a drain achievement. So that will be rectified later on. More pictures here. Comprehensive plan as it designated as Mua Kua employment. And I think that might be all the things I want to mention at this time. Do you have any questions?
I have some questions, Commissioner Gerson.
Yes, I wanted to know about enforcement of the requirement that the petitioner preserve vegetation on the west side of the property. What happens if that isn't done? What happens if they clear cut those trees?
That's a good question. I know that part of the site plan requirements are to have buffer yards and streetscapes. So that is something that we would likely have them replant to at least meet those minimum requirements. I would defer to County Legal about breaking a commitment or written commitment. What happens with that?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I guess I don't at this time.
All right, well, thank you for bringing this forward. I don't have any questions. I will note that the outline of the written commitments, recorded commitment has changed since the plan commission meeting. So it's much longer than it was. When do you all want to hear this? Do you want to hear this next week or would you like to wait? Okay. All right, so I think if you could get some more information on the forestry plan, it sounds like that's what we need to see. Any more information if possible from the petitioner on that? I think that would be helpful. But we could see this as soon as next week, which is September seventh on our regular session. If you choose or if you need to wait, then do so. Okay?
Sounds great.
Good, thank you so much. Appreciate your time and appreciate the order. Does any other department have anything for the work session? So if not, then we are going to recess this work session until high noon. And at that point, we will be having a discussion with the members of the city council, the mayor's office and the county council about sort of just an initial discussion about the convention center status. So with that, we are recessed. Thank you. All right. This is I'm gonna call out of recess. The work session for the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. This is an informal discussion on the convention center expansion project. We have all three members of the Board of Commissioners here. We have from the county council Cheryl Munson and Jeff McKim. We have Mary Catherine Carmichael from the mayor's office and we have Sue Scambolary and Susan Sandberg from the city council. Thank you all, one and all, for being here today. And we really don't have, it's just an agenda item, but we don't really have an agenda for this part of the meeting. So we just kind of want to open it up and talk through what everyone's thinking. Because I don't think we're all on the same page right now and that's fine, but we should all hear from the various components of city government and county government. And to give us a sense of what folks want to do, what we can do, what we should do and hopefully maybe hopefully plan a next step, a meeting or whatever it might be. I appreciate that you're all willing to meet in the public eye and I think that's a really important thing for us to be doing. So we can start with whoever would like to start.
On that, I'll start it off. How about that? I'm Mary Catherine Carmichael, Director of Public Engagement in the Office of the Mayor. Thank you so much for hosting us today. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for getting us all pulled together here. Glad to be here. You know, in our brief communications back and forth to get this set up, you said that you'd heard a presentation and so you didn't need another one of those. And I think our time here is so precious, this thirty minutes, that we're not going to do that. But we're ready, we're really, we want to do the two ears, one mouth thing and hear from you guys, get your reaction to the proposal that's kind of been out there now for, I don't know, since at least August fifth or something. I might have been before that, but anyway. So I'm gonna leave it there and let my other folks say whatever they want to say as we get started.
Why don't we hear from other city members, city council, please?
Sure, thanks. Obviously, this is a project that is interest that is of interest to everybody in the community. And I think we all rightfully have good questions to ask. I think today is an opportunity to actually start to inventory those and articulate those in very clear terms. And find out, okay, what what are sticking points? What are questions we have? What is information that was missing and how do we get it? So I think to actually start putting that down and Penny and I had a conversation about this in a separate arena. But I think today is that opportunity to start saying, okay, what questions are top of mind? What questions are even further down than that for that matter? And let's start writing it down and let's start finding out who the sources of answers are. So I think that's an opportunity today, so.
We certainly have the food and beverage tax dollars that are waiting, have been for a time. We know that COVID has slowed us all down and has caused many more challenges for both you as county leaders and us as city leaders. But I think it is clear at this point that there is some community support quite a bit for moving ahead. And whatever the barriers are, whatever the obstacles are, I think this is a good opportunity to sit down and talk about them. I think from my perspective, I always prefer to work in collaboration. And so I know there has been a proposal put on the table that kind of allows you to think about the possibilities of turning the control, the reins, if you will, back to the city. But to the extent that we can work together on this, that would be my preference, to be honest. But talking through what has been put on the table, I think is very important. What's your response to it? What are your concerns about it? And how do we move forward in a in a timely fashion? And I know other matters are on the table too, like the jail, the justice system that I know is probably another big issue that you have on your plate. These are two separate conversations, but but conversations that I think need to be had sooner rather than later to try to solve the problems and get to some solutions.
Great, county council?
Jeff McKim and I are the only members of the county council who are still serving that pass voted to pass the food and beverage tax. Perhaps we have a special interest in that regard, but that's not correct because many members of the county council support expansion of the convention center. And questions certainly will be focused for the council on financial matters because that is the focus of the council's work.
Thanks.
And I guess I would just like to say that I've I've heard a number of different sort of proposals for moving forward. I've heard cities proposal, I've heard various variants of four five oh one C three, C I B. I am, I guess, at this point, neutral on the the means of governance going forward. I would just I very strongly echo my my colleague and other colleagues on the county council that we would like to see the convention center expansion move forward and move forward expeditiously for several reasons. First of all, practically, you know, we have sort of a limited fuse to get this, get any bonds passed before possibly losing access to the funding, but then also just to keep promises to the public that we made when we when we passed the tax. So I do hope we we all move forward and I am I'm very interested in hearing the different positions and the differences between these variants, various governance forms.
Which of my colleagues would like to start?
I'm a little bit behind the curve on a few things, just in my own personal life, I'll put it that way. So I may have missed something, but I had asked to have a written proposal from the mayor and not just stuff that we've all heard in the media and I don't believe I've gotten that. And so I wanted to see things fleshed out in particular. And I guess also, and I'm not trying to mince words here, but Council President Sandberg said that to return the the convention center to the city. And I don't believe it was ever in the hands of the city. Sorry, I I figured that that's what it was, but I guess that I also am very concerned about why we are not going forward with the C I B that we got really close to agreeing on. And you know, what specifically are the reasons for not moving forward with that?
Well, basically, I just, I don't really understand after the, I think it was a couple of years of work that were put in to get us to the C I B. And at this point, apparently we're under pressure to move ahead quickly. It's hard for me to understand why we would just scrap all of that and start all over again. And I think there, I think it's pretty definite that it would require a lot of negotiating for us to just turn everything over. And at this time, we are having the convention center appraised so that we'll have a better and each lot separately that's involved in the expansion, so we'll have a better idea of the value of what we're being asked for.
Also, I do have an issue with, I don't know if we legally can turn over the innkeeper's tax for the maintenance of and paying off the bond for the convention center if it is given over to the city.
Exactly.
Yeah, that that's a key question. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, so I mean, that to me is, you know, what wasn't clear to me as well is the is what happens with the sort of marketing arm that innkeepers tax pays for. You know, Visit Bloomington is a great asset for the entire community, even despite the name. They do help increase tourism for places like Lake Monroe and and other parts of the county outside the city. And I would, you know, we already feel like we're in a backseat position on that as as of, you know, we're already, we're already sort of second fiddle in that effort now. And we'd really like to ensure that we're not, as Monroe County cut out of that, right? Because that's because that's an important part of of the county's tourism, which is which is important to all of us, I know. So on the specifics of the proposal that was outlined by the chamber brought to the county council. Yeah, there are legal questions for me. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how we could, we could receive a million dollars from CBC. I don't understand that. So a lot of a lot of questions about that, right? So more specificity is needed and and we would need our legal team to look at everything. The, you know, it's interesting to see, for example, you know, over twenty years, up to one point nine million, which is anticipated to be received from the opioid litigation process. The city will receive money, the county will receive money. You know, that money is earmarked very specifically for treatment and prevention in specific percentages. And, you know, I think I think our health department, we'd have to ask them, I'm not going to speak for them, but it seems like our health department may be fine helping to administer that money because the city doesn't have a health department. And it is, it is complicated and there are reportings and and all that, but we're going to have our own money too. So it might be nice to put that money together. I don't really see that as a part of a sale of property or a transfer of property. I think this is, it's it's its own thing and it should be brought to the health board. And they may very well be willing to do it and I hope they are. Because I think it will be important to have a coalesced pot of money to help, especially as we continue with community justice reform, to help figure out the treatment side and the prevention side and making sure that the county money and the city money get together and do the most good as a combined force. But I don't see that as part of anything having to do with the convention center. It's certainly not money for the county to spend at will. I don't want the public to think that that's what it is. And the, one of the other things, you know, we heard at our meeting and then I watched at the council meeting that this information was a little bit more information was provided by Deputy Mayor Griffin. And it is regarding a bus line to Park forty eight, meaning a west third bus line. You know, then it became a limited time and then it became for a nominal fee. I heard those that phrase being bandied about. You know, that doesn't seem like much of an offer because we can pay for and find a way to create a rural transit line out there if we need to. So I'm not sure how much of a gift that is. I'm going to agree with my colleagues that I'm not clear on what happened with the C I B. When the pandemic hit our community with a full fury, as we all know, we were on the verge of completing the capital improvement board agreement. And that took months and months of intense negotiation. We've, you know, Mr. Cockrell was gracious enough to provide us with the timeline of this convention center discussion. And and I think that's really a helpful thing to look back on because that represents a lot of work. It's not just dates on a page. There was a lot of sweat equity in there as well. And after months of intense negotiation, what has changed? Why is the city now opposed to the structure? So I think that's a question that we'd like to pose as well. And I'm going to say something else, kind of bringing in another piece of the many plates that we're always spinning at one time because that's what we do in government, in local government is I'm of the mindset, and I may be the only one here and I'm, you know, speaking for me here and my colleagues may agree or disagree, but I'm of the mindset that it would be really foolish for us right now to turn over or exchange, transfer, sell. It's a sale, let's let's be honest. Property, downtown property, when we're in the middle of our community justice reform effort, that includes the construction of a new jail and a possible justice campus. Now granted, we have identified property on Fullerton Pike. We are going through the details. We're getting a survey done. We're getting all of the necessary field tests done on the soil. We're trying to get a better grip on what can and cannot be done on that property. We would still, if it's an appropriate lot, we would still have to go through city plan commission for a rezone. And what if it doesn't work? And then we've now given away something that we didn't put on the front burner, but may have to be on the front burner. Because folks, we have to build the new jail. We are not, this is not an option. And so I think we need to pause. And this is a few months, it's not multiple years. I think we need to pause in the short term here. We can work out other things and talk through other things and figure this out. But on in terms of actually cementing an agreement, I would never be comfortable doing that until we were that we knew that we had a property and that we're moving forward that is appropriate, an appropriate space. So we can't, we can't, in my mind, sell, transfer, give away, whatever you want to call it, space when we may very well need it. And and if we need it, we're going to have to use it. And it's not ideal. This is not what any of us want, to use downtown space. But we may be in a position where that's our really our only option. And I think it would be foolish to cement an agreement. Doesn't mean we shouldn't negotiate one. I think we should move forward the C I B. But I think signing on the dotted line for me is going to be contingent on us getting other property surveyed, rezoned and ensure that we have an appropriate place to do what we have to do, not what we want to do with the convention center, but what we have to do as a government relating to justice. So my two cents. Thanks for listening. So other thoughts now that we've all set our piece to start with?
Thank you, that's a lot. It's good, that's why we're here. I'm gonna have to have glasses for this part, sorry, gang. Okay, so thank you for, that is very informative and I really appreciate the feedback. I know my council folks also have been really interested to hear your thoughts on this, so thank you. It's clearly you've put a lot of thought into it and we appreciate that. So some things I'll be able to respond to right now and some I may need to get back to you on. I did want to just start with one quick question on the last thing item that you mentioned. I did want to just start with one quick question on the last thing, item that you mentioned, Julie, or Commissioner, sorry, Thomas. We know each other, so it's hard for me to remember the titles, I'm sorry. So on the property south of the existing convention center, I assume that's what you're talking about, like if the other property doesn't work out, you might have to use the property that you own in that area?
I, I'm thinking that we don't know what will happen until we get that settled. And we do have property between College and Walnut, south of Third, and then south of the convention center as well.
Is, is that property that was purchased by the innkeeper's tax? Yeah, I, I don't know, that seems like that-
I know, that would be a whole nother legal issue.
Could be an illegal issue, right.
Absolutely it would, but right now, you know, that's an issue.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In, in addition to the land in, in downtown that we've talked about having been purchased by the innkeeper's tax, how did that land measure up against the criteria that you mentioned? You, you talked about the property south of town being the only one that kind of checked all the boxes. And how does the property downtown, does that check boxes?
It doesn't. It checks some, but not, not enough.
So it's not-
Certainly not enough. It's not ideal. It is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. But if we have to build a jail, what are we going to do? Right? So, I mean, it's, it's just a, it's a parachute, right?
And so the question becomes, or one of the questions becomes, how would property be paid for by the innkeeper's tax be repurposed in that way? And is that even possible?
Have to be purchased and we'd have to do a lot, yep.
And I could ask a question because this is a question I think we've asked in some of our leadership meetings. Why not the CIB? I mean, we, we asked that question too, and I think the response, if I recall correctly, was kind of, oh, no, 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 that's just not, but why? That's something I want to know from our own administration because you've made the very eloquent point that a lot of sweat equity and a lot of work went into that prior to everything getting shut down. And why not start there again and be more collaborative in this city-county approach to the convention center expansion, which I think we can all agree is, is an important thing. It's just a matter of sticking points.
I'm happy to address that. So I think that with this proposal, it's a little bit of a departure from what we've been talking about before. And so the time it would take to set up a CIB and the fact that it has taken us, you know, you could see from the timeline, a really long time to get as far as we are. Now we're under the gun. We've got a genuine time crunch, right? So we think that we need to have a setup that is extremely nimble and can act quickly. We want to make sure that we can do what we promised people we would do with our food and beverage dollars. And we also want to be able to prove to the state legislature that we're doing what we said we would do because that's the rub with them. They want to make sure that, you know, we are in fact using those dollars for what we promised we would use them for. So I think it's a, it's a timing crunch. It's also, you know, this is a different, a slightly different proposal. And so we feel strongly that this 501(c)(3) setup would make more sense. And I think also frankly, you know, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior and we haven't been able to get this moving fast enough. So I know that it feels uncomfortable to turn a corner on this. I get that. So I wanted, that's why we need to be sitting here talking, but that's the response to your inquiry.
Thank you. And with respect to that, I heard you say, I believe, that we take a pause, but for short term. So you don't see this taking months as this has taken?
No, no.
To come to some mutual understanding as to how to move forward on a CIB and get this done in partnership?
Right.
I'm, head nods, but-
Yeah, I, I agree that-
In terms of the nickeliness factor that was just mentioned, can we be nimble at this point in time?
Yeah, I, I, I wonder why it was characterized as needing to stretch out to reestablish that CIB.
Could you repeat that? I couldn't understand that last sentence, I'm sorry.
I didn't understand why you're characterizing reconstituting the CIB would take a long time. That, that that would be less nimble than going through this other process.
So I think it's a matter of the appointments, getting those all lined up as much as anything. And also you do, I think there's a legal process for that. With a 501(c)(3), you can start basically doing business pretty much immediately as soon as you file for your 501(c)(3) status.
But I'm heartened to hear there's some interest in, you know, picking up where we left off. I think there is as much speculation about, for us, for land, as there is about the legislature's going to do X, Y, Z. We don't, I mean, we know what they tried to do last year and, you know, but we can't predict, right? We don't know that that's going to happen. And if it did, we would have a really firm deadline, I believe. They would say it's, here's your deadline, July 1st, or whatever it is that they would set in that legislation. So I think at that point, if that happened, we can be nimble and, and make things happen. But I, yeah, what I'm asking for is really, I think if we pick up where we left off, talk, talk through the CIB, but, but for me, you know, the sign off is, is going to be, hey, do we have a place to do what we have to do for community justice? That's, that's what it's going to take for me, just to make sure that we're not doing something that we would regret in six months or a year. Counsel and-
I would like to comment that I believe setting up a CIB would not take a long And I believe the, the arrangement of appointments was nearly agreed upon when, when we concluded our discussions because of the pandemic. I do know that setting up a 501(c)(3) can be a structure that would be concerning to some people because 501(c)(3)'s are not necessarily nimble with respect to working between government and public entities for operations and management. And I don't know about, I don't know about how long it would take to set that up, but I do question that it, that it could be nimble and be handled quickly. Whereas the, the CIB is set out in statute and it's laid out explicitly what needs to be done.
And I guess I'll just make a different comment about the land. I, I've always been uncomfortable with the idea that land, whether it's transferred to a CIB or to the city or whatever, has to be an all or nothing thing. I, I mean, I, I'm going to say for myself, having a jail from the existing convention center north is a nonstarter. I would not vote to appropriate $1 to, to build or operate a jail. So I, I don't think it's reasonable to hold up the existing area that's been discussed for convention center expansion for, for, for the jail. But I do think that the, the area south, I think is open to, open to question. I've always been a little bit uncomfortable about conveying the entire, all of that land immediately to a, to a CIB or to a, to the convention center effort. Given the direction, it seems that, I mean, so much has happened since that land in the south was acquired. It's been a lot of development since then, a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
Well, really, I don't, it's hard for me to find the actual value to the county in the offer that's been made so far. So I think that puts us at a point where there would be a huge amount of negotiating to be done before anything could be considered. And apparently, speed is necessary, so I really think that we need to move forward quickly with the CIB form in equal partnership between the city and the county so we can collaborate in an equal way and create the CIB.
And Commissioner Jones, you said there are a lot of, there's a lot of negotiating that needs to be happening. What are the specific points of negotiation that you foresee?
I don't think we can actually say that until we get the appraisal done. But this is a very valuable piece of property and-
And is the appraisal being conducted at market rate as though it could also, it could just as easily hold student housing?
Yeah.
Right, of course.
Actually, what we've discussed more has been affordable housing.
So, or affordable housing, or so the, so the interesting question becomes, has, has the public, our collective public not already paid for it?
Well, it, it is innkeepers and-
Right.
And I, you know, it, it is, it belongs to the county. I mean, people, all of the taxpayers paid for it, but it was put in county hands.
For use for convention center expansion or expansion under-
Yeah, absolutely. But, and I don't see why we wouldn't want to be equal partners in moving it forward. The city clearly has a lot of interest in it, a great desire to see it happen. At this time, we own the assets. I think we should develop a collaborative, equal partnership to move forward with this effort.
Just a question, I don't want to take us too far off track, but I, I want to comment on something I'm not hearing today that I have heard quite a bit in the past. And that's the notion that we don't even know if we need a convention center. You know, post-pandemic, we don't know if conferences are even coming back. We don't know if any of that's actually going to happen. People aren't going to want to gather in person anymore and so forth. I'm not hearing any of that today. So that, to me, would suggest that we're kind of past that point and we accept the fact that all of the data supports the notion that conferences, there is a demand and there is an opportunity here. Am I reading that correctly?
I, what I would have to say is that I can believe there is an immediate demand. I don't think, my personal feeling is that that is not going to be a long-term thing. I think that this is something that kind of goes with age. And people who didn't grow up with Zoom and all of that do feel a need to see each other in person and, and discuss things personally. I think younger people don't see that need at all. So to me, this seems rather like Indiana carefully building a whole lot of canals just before highways were put through. But that's only my opinion. I'm not an expert in this area. I'm not going to try to keep it from happening just because that's what I think.
Okay.
And I have no way to say for sure that it would be true.
Right. And, and as community leaders, the comment was made, well, we can't predict what will happen. No, but I think we have an obligation to do our best to anticipate.
And that's what I've done.
And that takes, and that takes data. So I'm wondering, is there data, again, I guess what I'm trying to do is take one issue, if we're agreed on it, off the table. And it sounds like there's still a question about whether or not we-
I, I do not have problems with this going forward.
Okay.
This is my opinion. To collect data on this would be pretty complex. I'm not exactly sure how we would go through it. And I'm not saying that I think the convention business is going to die in 10 years. I'm talking more long-term than that.
Okay. So if there, I guess I would just extend-
I don't think we need to continue discussing this particularly.
And, and data can go both ways. It could go against an expansion. We don't have that data, as, as I think we all understand. But I also think that expanding the convention center goes against the city's climate change plan because it requires a lot of automobile use to get into Bloomington. And we are, we're wanting to market this as a regional kind of facility. And so, you know, we, we tear up Seventh Street, we tear up Third Street, we do all kinds of things. But bringing more vehicles into the city goes against the climate change plan that you've been putting out.
And then another devil's advocate argument that I certainly hear from a number of constituents is from the economic development standpoint, what kind of jobs do these bring to the community? Are they low-wage service industry jobs for hoteliers, restaurant workers? Or will this be a boon to the entire area to draw in visitors from outside, spending their money here in Bloomington and being a real driver of improving the economy and improving employment opportunities for people, which is a real serious need? And so that's when I'm out and about and people are saying, why are you in support of the convention center now? What's this going to do to help the economy and raise the wage floor, which is so terribly, you know, lacking here in the area? That's another thing that I hear. So, you know, in addition to, will people come if you build it, if you expand it? Will you bring in the tourism that you hope to do? And then how does that trickle up to the economy in a significant way? Or will we be, be better off, you know, investing in other economic development drivers?
Yeah. And I, and I, and I agree with that. I mean, that's, that's been my concern all along is, you know, oh, 260 jobs. Really, what kind of jobs are they? And let's think about where profits go. Because the biggest profits and the biggest economic driver will go to hotels, I would assume, because that's the most expensive thing versus a dinner or a lunch. So you will have hotels doing very well. Now, who owns the hotels? Nobody in Bloomington owns the downtown hotels. They manage them, they don't own them. And, and, and you have, you have either franchise or direct ownership of hotels downtown. You have the, you, you do have some privately owned properties, but they do not number nearly as high as, as the hotels that are owned corporately. Yes, there are franchises, but the same issue can be raised about restaurants. And, you know, when you have a situation like we have now where, as a result of the pandemic, we've had sort of this merging of multiple restaurants under a development group, great, it's locally owned. You know, if, if we want to provide economic development, we could give them food and beverage money if they're struggling because of the pandemic. We did that with our portion of the food and beverage money. I know the city did loans, we did grants. But that's always been a question for me. 260 jobs, how much money do you spend for 260 jobs? And is there a better way to do that in a way that really builds up Monroe County, Bloomington in a, in a stronger manner in terms of future economic development? Whether it be, you know, do we create some sort of massive recording studio effort so we become the Mecca for musicians around the Midwest? I mean, there are other things that could be done, but I know that the county council passed what they passed. I had initially voted no on, on moving forward with the, the initial study. I know that we can get really optimistic, rosy numbers from anybody at Visit Bloomington and at the convention center. You can read newspaper stories online from across the country. Some of them are saying our conventions business has tanked, others are saying it's going great. And then there are now a third group emerging that says, what do we do with all these conventions given climate change and we don't have enough water in our city? And, you know, we have to be aware of all of these things at one time. So, you know, I don't, you know, I am, I am hearing mostly from people who don't think we need to move forward. And then I say to them, but we've got this tax, what do we do? And so I'm not hearing from a lot of folks who are saying, you know, anyone outside of the chamber in the convention business and one, one restaurant owner, I'm not hearing this rallying cry from the people except to say, do something or don't do it. And if you don't do it, then let's stop with the, with the food and beverage tax. But, but just a reminder, the innkeeper's tax is paid by visitors.
Right.
Right. So it's not, it's, it's not a tax on the people who live here unless they bring their friends and family in and it's a tax on them, but, all right.
So, okay, I'm just listening to all that you just had to say and, and certainly I understand your points and, and I don't agree with all of them, but I, I do understand where you're coming from. But- But I guess I'm wondering, based on those concerns and those doubts, why would you want to continue to take the risk, do the bonding, you know, use up your bonding capacity, all that stuff? Why would you want to continue to have, uh, as you mentioned it, a co-equal partnership? It doesn't even sound like you're really 100% behind the idea. So at the city, you know, we committed 100% of our food and beverage tax to this from the get-go. We're all in, we've been all in. Now, I can't speak for my council members over here, but I can tell you that the administration is, wants to go ahead with this. I'd love, I know we're short on time, I'd love an opportunity to address your concerns about jobs. I'd love an opportunity to can, address your concerns about tourism in general and the impacts on the econ, or on, I'm sorry, not the economy, um, the environment. So please allow me, if you will, I don't want to take this time for that, but I would love to address those issues. I think one more issue, uh, that we have with the, the CIB would be that the county would control any bonding. And so, um, you know, there would be a veto power, an implied veto power for anything that the, the bigger CIB wanted to do. And then Julie, if I could just really briefly, um, address your comments about the legislature. I will tell you that they are writing legislation right now in Indianapolis. And so I, I do think it's rather urgent. Um, and I would remind you that the likelihood is that the legislation that they write this year would be similar to that that was written last year. And that put a, the absolute hard deadline on our ability to bond, right? So that's, that just blows everything right out of the water.
Yeah, I hear that. Yeah. You, you haven't seen any of the draft language that says this takes place immediately upon passage and governor's signature.
No, but you know, I like to prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
I know, it's, it's, it's fickle, they're fickle, I get it, I hear you. And, you know, the thing is, is that the county council, the commissioners have, have, and our past colleagues have spent, um, a quarter of a century.
Sure.
Investing in building up and ensuring, um, the convention center operations. And that's, that's the reason why I would want a CIB. Because it is a city-county partnership right now, in a sense. It's located in the city, it's, it's managed through a county-appointed board and paid for by innkeeper's tax, which is the entire county. Um, and I think, um, I think that, you know, the one thing I have heard very loudly from constituents so far is that they do not want this handed over to the city. They want us to either stop or, um, the other thing I'm hearing is, why can't you work together again like you were before? And so I, I, I do hear that a lot. And I think it seems like there is some general, uh, interest in doing that minus the issue of timing, right? That, that the issue of timing with the legislature is the sticking point on that. Is there other sticking point on moving forward with the CIB?
Yes, I, Mayor Hamilton's made it clear to me that he's not interested in pursuing a CIB model.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know. Do you know why?
The reasons I offered earlier.
Okay, just, just because of, well, because of the legislature and.
The bonding.
The bonding. Is it, I wonder if it's easier to bond as a 501(c)(3).
We'd have to, we'd go through our own council.
I don't know that it is, okay. All right. Okay, others?
I apologize, and I am going to have to leave in just a moment. I thought this was going to, uh, end earlier. I did just want to make one quick comment. I don't want to go, you know, we don't need to go down a rabbit hole about hotels, but, because this shouldn't all be about the hoteliers. But a lot of the hotels, local hotels are locally owned, and it's really important to think that. They're not franchises, they may be flagged with a particular brand, but like the Spring Hill Suites is owned by a local property owner, not by, not by Marriott. You know, that's, that's sort of a national platform, not, not an ownership of the hotel. So I just wanted to make that clear.
And, and to be clear, as I was making my comments about being the devil's advocate from hearing from certain constituents, certainly not probably a majority. I think we've all heard enough from Talisha Kopic and Mike McAfee to justify, I certainly can, the need to, um, make our convention center as good as it can be, as attractive as it can be. It is used, it is well-loved, both by the local community and, and anyone else who comes to visit Bloomington. So I think hopefully, as we resolve this meeting today, we can all come to the common ground that it is something we're interested in. I don't hear from the three of you that you don't want to pursue it. But it's a matter of working through these sticking points and how can we do a better job of collaborating?
And, and I would agree that I think that the one thing that I really liked the most about the convention center proposal that we had heard earlier was this idea of having these community rooms that would be available to anyone. And I think, I think that component is a must-have because then there is a sense of ownership in the community. But I also feel like then it really serves the purpose of bringing together not just people from far away to Bloomington, but bringing our community together. And I think there are ways that could be enhanced and, and really done well. And, you know, I'm, you know, I have questions, I always do. I always ask questions like, you know, what jobs, who, who gets the money? Where does it go? Is there a better way to do this? If we're trying to ensure, thank you, thank you. If we're trying to ensure that, you know, the hotels are doing well, is there another way to provide that, you know?
But not to, not to a point of paralysis.
Yes.
Where we're just.
Yes, exactly.
We're not moving forward.
Thank you.
I get the need for expediencing.
Thank you, yeah, oh, I do too.
It looks like we are getting close to wrapping up and I have an important, uh, facet of our earlier discussions that I would like to bring up now. And you, you led into it, Commissioner Thomas. It was, there was a number of discussions about how our convention center was also our civic center. And we needed our civic center to be able to handle bigger and larger conventions so we could keep it going because we need that weekday traffic at the convention center and in our hotels. And that this is the strategy for making it work. And I thought, uh, the studies that looked at this, uh, were, were very approachable and, um, really made their case. And if you look at the numbers provided by Talisha Kopic, I think it's something like 70% of the business at the convention center is essentially local. Not just for civic activities, but for local businesses too.
Business expo and all that stuff, yeah. So that's okay, so do we, how do we want to do this? Should we, should we come back and meet again and talk through some of these questions that we've all raised, maybe?
Yeah, I think that's great. And let me get you some information in writing to address some of these things that I didn't want to take time for in, in this little period of time. Yeah, and I'd like to meet sooner rather than later, I mean, I'll, I'll make it happen, so.
What, um, is, uh, if we wanted to meet, uh, in the evening, we could do that. Usually, um, Monday evenings are fairly quiet in the county in terms of our calendar.
We're happy to host, if you prefer, we could take turns.
We could again, you know, we could also do another work session, daytime, whatever is convenient for everybody. Maybe, um, our office could send out a, a doodle poll or something to everyone that's here today and, and get some dates out there and we could pick something. Oh, that's right, that is the Monday, yeah.
But finishes at six.
Yeah. But it does, it does end at six, so we could do like a 6:30 or something.
Well, and again, we're happy to take, take a turn hosting.
Your schedule either, we don't want to step on your schedule, we don't want to step on the Tuesday's schedule. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So maybe we could put some of those on and see what comes up. Now, let's throw some, let's throw some together, yeah. Yeah, some evenings, some daytimes.
Again, we're happy to host too, so we're happy to take a turn.
Excellent, appreciate that, great. Well, I think this was really productive, an opportunity to share ideas. Um, and we would really appreciate seeing something more structured in terms of our proposal as well, of something that has more detail to it, um, versus what we received the Friday.
I can, I'm, I can only respond to what you've told me your concerns are today. So I can, I can take that back as far as like super more detailed, I'm not sure.
Do we want to still see a detailed proposal, the original proposal? The one that was presented at the county council, uh, was emailed the Friday before the county council meeting? That one, yes. If, if there's any other detail, is, is there more detail that can be offered on that? Or is that pretty much?
That's it at the moment.
Okay.
Again, I feel like I need more specific, like, okay, you don't think the 1.9 for the opioid settlement, you don't want that to be part of this, I heard that, right? I heard that, um, you were concerned about the money following the, an expanded convention center. Let's see, that's the 1.9. Um, you didn't say anything about the debt, the two, some, around the 2 million.
I wasn't clear about how that could happen or what the benefit, there's really no, you know, the county doesn't benefit from that.
Sure.
Because that's a debt on the convention center being paid by the food and beverage tax.
Right, so it's more of a pass-through for you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then you said you can do your own bus route, so you're not worried about the Bloomington transit out to Ivy Tech?
It, it was a proposal that was pretty limited in scope. It said for a few years and then we heard at a nominal cost. So if there's a cost, what is it? How many years? How often, you know, if it's once a day, that no one's going to use it, so.
So I can only make a proposal, my council people are very much, uh, in charge of, of the final decision on that. So I defer to Susan here.
We had our budget hearings last night that included public transit, and of course, they have a board.
They do have a board.
And feasibility studies of their own, so we cannot unilaterally tell them what to do.
Yeah, and I do, and I, in a way, I feel almost like it's, it's kismet the way that the BT strategic plan is going to be done in December. And we will hopefully have property picked out and ready to move forward. Like, everything is sort of happening at once, I think, in a really good way, honestly. So I, I can appreciate that. I think that all comes together well. And I think, um, yeah, we, we can, I think we can be nimble and I think, um, we should meet soon and, and talk through some more things and, um, see where everyone's at, yeah.
And I know you're kind of holding your breath, waiting for your appraisals to come back. And, you know, our position on that is because all of these properties have been paid for by, with public dollars already, it's not really, we don't look at this as a sale, as a traditional sale, but more of a transfer because, again, you wouldn't want to ask the public to pay for something twice. So that's how we're framing this and.
It's, uh, innkeeper's tax.
Right, but, and, and you were the receiver of that, right? I get that, and you voted that tax in, but those are public dollars.
Well, it's, it's a public dollar because it's a tax, but it's a tax on visitors, not on the public.
Right.
Not on, not on local residents.
Right.
Thank you, okay, all right, good. So we can talk through that and, and talk through that some more and I'm sure council will have some more input on that too. So we'll do a doodle poll out, yeah? And then we'll send it to you, also send it to the mayor and who can come, both of you, maybe, that would be great. So it's good to have you here.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate everyone's time.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, so our work session is adjourned.